Salam alaikum for being here. Inshallah we are hoping that this is going to be an informative, frank, and honest discussion. And inshallah we will learn more about what is being proposed here. But at OCIF, we believe that it's always best that we make informed decisions, come to opinions that are based on information and solid information. So OCIF is holding this meeting not necessarily because we are endorsing CVE or we are against CVE. What we are saying is that, look, there is something out there, it is called CVE. Let's find out what counter... what is it, counterviolence extremism? So we just want to make sure that we are well informed about what is at hand, inshallah. In the interest of time, what I will do is, we will play a video. After the video, inshallah, brother Muhammed is going to come over. And brother Muhammed, inshallah, will take us through the process. And he will be our moderator for the rest of the presentation, inshallah. So having said that, welcome you all to OCIF. And go ahead.
Violent extremism has definitely impacted our lives. It has become a danger for all of us as Americans when we have to deal with groups like ISIL, Al Qaeda, or Al Qaeda.
Well, it was about a few years ago, I began to work with the foundation, we are reaching out. The whole idea is to build the foundation first. That could be to talk about future events and other problems.
Really, in essence, everyone needs to come together, as we have in the past, dealing with other issues to turn the tide.
The three areas are our focus: prevention, intervention, and intervention. Intervention is the area where we need work. This is an area, if you look at the gang law of Los Angeles, the war on gangs didn't work. It didn't work arresting our way, we couldn't arrest our way out of the problem. You cannot declare war on this type of phenomenon. And so, often until we realize that intervention efforts, where you talked about youth development, employment opportunities, character development, diversion programs, this is an area that is just right for this phenomenon that we're experiencing today. To find ways to build offerings for people who may have in their mind that this is what they want to do, but they haven't yet mobilized violence.
Offerance is essentially an alternate path for the individuals to go down. It's the community, it's the mental health resource. It's the mentors in the community and getting them engaged with some of, in particular, oftentimes the youth, to assure that they have someone to talk to and they have someone that can try and steer them away from going down that wrong path.
In the Los Angeles mental health system, we found that if we're really interested in creating strong recovery, we need to do more than provide treatment. We need to find community support for all aspects of a person's life.
What we're trying to renew and what we're trying to restore are, you know, beautiful behaviors and the principles that benefit the community.
So the more engaged, we are, the more involved. We are with different activities and different groups such as law enforcement, like interfaith and community awareness and activism. There is channels of large comprehension and open doors between all of these teams that there is better access made to combat these problems.
I think that interfaith relations are important because we often hear only about the extremes of each community, right, whether it's Jewish or Muslim or Christian communities. And by virtue of shifting the focus back on those who are willing to build relationships with each other and work through the difficult moments of conflict, we create a space for that majority in the middle, for those moderates, to be louder and to overpower those voices on the extreme.
The role of every faith leader is to guide their flock away from violence and into peace. And specifically, what their faith teaches about peace and how to deal with situations when two people do not agree.
We can't keep arguing to young people that an American Muslim identity is real. And must we facilitate opportunities for them to actually experience this thing that's called a Muslim-American identity, that differentiates their experience from Muslims around the world, Muslims in history, and Muslims in the future.
We felt that there must be some synergy between the law enforcement and the Muslim community. And we took some initiatives, but the response was great. And we started in different modalities, having regular meetings with the sheriff department and with LAPD.
In the social science arena, we say, as Los Angeles goes, so goes California. And as California goes, so goes the nation.
The leadership from the very top have made the initiative to reach out to the Muslim community, to get to know us and to involve us in the process of securing our communities.
When LAPD implemented the suspicious activity reporting process, there was huge public outcry.
And it was only through engagement with community groups and civil rights organizations along with law enforcement that we were able to turn a corner.
When Chief Downing presented the SARS program to us, we met with him along with other civil rights groups and said, "We need five changes in the program." He took those requests, went to LAPD, came back, and we were able to reform SARS so that not only is it adhering to the civil liberties standards of our country, but it became more effective.
As long as we're talking to each other, things will happen. We can change the narratives.
The role of the US Attorney's Office in the community engagement process is really one of support for our local partners, being the LAPD, the LA County Sheriff's, and the LA Human Rights Commission, who for years have been on the ground establishing relationships with the community based on trust and communication.
When we talk to each other, when we act together, we break down the barriers that separate us. We find common purpose, common campaigns, and the end, we find our common humanity.
After the shooting in Wisconsin and the Sikh Dwaras, where six Sikhs were murdered by a white supremacist, we didn't have to go to LAPD to say, "Can you please help watch the Dwaras? Can you please help keep an ear out in case there's any copycats or reaper cushions for now?" They came to us, they called us. They called several members of the Sikh community, me in particular, to make sure that we were doing okay. Now, the community creates a concept, it creates an ideal in the communities they serve, that you are working together with the police department, that they are concerned about your welfare. The whole country could learn from LAPD.
If we take Los Angeles as the model, which it is, I would like to see it spilling out, Los Angeles, as fast as we can.
So this is our mission, you know, we're in this particular part of town. Our objective is to revive, renew, restore everything that's good, you know, including mercy and compassion. We want to revive peace.
Just wanted to give you a flavor of this. Salaam alaikum, good afternoon. My name is Muhammed Malas. I'm one of the board members here at Orange County Islamic Foundation. And I was asked on behalf of the board to welcome you here today and kind of share with you some of our vision of getting more relevant and feeling that we as a mosque have a community role to play in what we find happening in the media and what we're facing as a Muslim community. So having, it so happened that today was the lunchtime that we usually receive certain dignitaries, like the mayors, police chiefs, and other heads of, you know, supervisors, heads of universities, come to our camp, our masjid, feel free and feel at home being around in Muslim prayer and feel that being in a mosque and visiting the school and visiting the area, that there is nothing scary about being in a mosque. And it is not a breeding ground for terrorism, but it's actually Muslims can be part of the solution and we are part of the fabric and part of the pluralism of the United States of America. That makes us stronger and a better community. The reason we showed this film at the beginning of the Istanbul meeting is to share with you the experience. And this is a film that was actually shown to the 200 Muslim guests that were invited to the White House at the launch of this countering violent extremism. And it is something that we felt is very important to work with the people who went there because we found people came up with different impressions, different understandings, different ways that we have to act and follow on these proposals that are being made by the government on this new program. So we figured we're going to infine, because the different people I heard have different opinions. It's important at the end for us to understand, as the chutba said today, there is no reason for us to have one opinion, we're all different people with different backgrounds. It is important for us to be having the same strategy, but maybe having to reach a certain destination, but the way of reaching there may be different. That doesn't make our organizations weaker, as long as we have our eyes on the prize towards the end. Before I invite our speakers today, there was a film that shows us what President Obama said at that meeting, and we will share about four to five minutes of what President Obama had to say. And then we will invite our speakers, if you would, please. Yeah, we always have technical difficulties and it's part of the program, right? I was excited to see some faces here today that actually were not part of the program today. So Chief Michael Abin here this afternoon, I'm excited to have him here.
Most recently with the brutal murders in Chapel Hill with three young Muslim Americans. Many Muslim Americans are worried and afraid. And I want to be as clear as I can be, as Americans, all face and backgrounds. We stand with you in your grief and we offer our love and we offer our support. My point is this, as Americans, we are strong and we are resilient. And when tragedy strikes, when we take a hit, we pull together and we draw on what's best in our character, around the world and here in the United States. Inexcusable acts of violence have been committed against people of different faiths by people of different faiths, which is of course betrayal of all religions. It's not unique to one group or to one geography or one period of time. Al Qaeda and ISIL and groups like it are desperate for legitimacy. They try to portray themselves as religious leaders, holy warriors in defense of Islam. That's why ISIL presumes to declare itself the Islamic State. And they propagate the notion that America and the West generally is at war with Islam. That's how they recruit, that's how they try to radicalize yamdi. We must never accept the premise that they put forward because it is a lie. Nor should we grant these terrorists the religious legitimacy that they seek. They are not religious leaders, they're terrorists. And we are not at war with Islam. We are at war with people who have converted Islam.
I think...
Just wanted to share that with you. And with that, if I could ask our guests, Salaam Maryati, Aniyya Ali, Maria Kani, Mahmal Yunus.
Harun.
And we have, please, I could ask representatives of care, we can have Harun, Manjle, and Todd. There we are. Thank you for attending. Thank you. And hopefully we have enough seats for everybody here. And the reason we get the screen down, I think Salaam had a small presentation to make, so we'll let him go first. I'll be your moderator today, and I think my thing is not working with that. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. We will do five minutes each and then be able to open to question and answers. Please, I ask each one of you to be respectful, make your question a question, very short statement if you have to, and we'll be able to be effective and be able to have a good...
It's not working.
Maybe he put the volume down here. Why did he run away?
Need a break.
Aloha, aloha, that's very... Okay, so with that, Salaam, if you would, please, give us your presentation and we'll time you for five minutes.
Okay, thank you, Salaam alaikum. That already took 15 seconds. Where are we after 9/11? I think that's the question you have to ask yourself. And when you talk about where are we, where are we vis-à-vis the American public, the government policies, and our community? Where are we vis-à-vis the American public? The American public is more scared now than ever before. There is hysteria, it is not just racism and bigotry. You have teachers, neighbors, everybody is asking, "What is this all about?" So when we talk about CVE, we should think about how do we leverage CVE? CVE is a tool. How do we leverage CVE to reassure the American public? How do we leverage CVE to ensure that our constitutional rights are guaranteed when we engage the government and law enforcement? How do we leverage CVE so that our community is seen for what it is, it is part of the solution, and it has nothing to do with the problem? And these are the three points that we have. So these are the people that attended, including Imam Muhammad Majid, a former president of ISNA, and Osama Jamal, the US Council of Muslim Organizations. Unfortunately, I won't be able to go through everything, but let me just... Why do we engage on this issue? You engage so you can influence public opinion, so that you can get public officials to adopt your points. When President Obama talked about how Islam has nothing to do with ISIS, and he will not call it Islamic terrorism, the right wing had a fit because he was adopting the Muslim-American talking points on the issue. So we see that as a success. And it's done when you engage people to see what the Muslim community is all about. And when we talk about CVE, there are going to be programs. And the question that we have to ask ourselves, are those programs and public funds going to go into the hands of Islamophobes? Or are those public funds going to go in the hands of people that will do good for our community and for the public at large? That's the question you have to ask. Am I almost out of time?
You have two more. Halfway.
Okay. What do we mean by CVE? And again, it depends on how you define it. If CVE means that the police is going to come in here and give a chutba, no. And I use, you know, an example to dramatize the point. In other words, law enforcement's job is not to teach us what's the right religion or to intervene or to deal with our social issues. CVE means that it's the Muslim community's responsibility and they have the power to push back against ISIS propaganda. It is our responsibility to show what Islam is. Anybody know how many Twitter accounts ISIS has? Give me a number.
Twenty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
It has between 50 and 90,000 Twitter accounts. So while we're debating what CVE is all about, ISIS is going ahead and bombarding the world with their tweets. So that's what we mean by CVE is put Islam up there in the public eye to see that it is the antidote to extremism. Because Islam stands for human dignity, ISIS stands for cruelty, and so on and so forth. There are challenges of engaging, as people like the NSA West stated, Muslim advocates. But also, when we engage, you know who gets upset the most when we are in the White House? Bigots. They had a fit because the President of the United States was speaking to over 200 Muslims and probably had the best speech about Islam that any sitting president had. That's a success. I don't care what issue we're dealing with, but when we get the President to respect, acknowledge, and value the vital contributions of American Muslims, we are achieving success. Are there pitfalls? Yes, but we can navigate our way through the pitfalls. The big picture is Islam that day was seen in a positive light and the right wing bigots had a fit. They even said, "How can President Obama invite Salaam Al-Mariadi to the White House but not Benjamin Netanyahu?" So they're concerned about Benjamin Netanyahu going to the White House and a poor guy like me being in the White House? It's because any Muslim they invite, they're going to have a fit. It's not just me. And they say these things about us all the time. Now, the last thing, I know I'm out of time.
Take my card.
Thank you, Maria. What's the cost of not taking action? Let's just say we just said, "You know what, we don't want to have anything to do with this." The negative news is going to continue. The Muslim community is not going to be seen for what it is, but it is going to be seen for what it is not. ISIS will continue to dominate the news, and all we're going to be doing is issuing press releases denouncing ISIS and press releases crying about Islamophobia and hate crimes. And the question to us is, is that worth not taking action? I think the answer is no, we should take action, we should do something about that. Then Islamophobes influence decision-makers, Islamophobes get the public funding, and there will be more surveillance. If we want surveillance to be gone, we have to push it out with community-led programs, community empowerment programs, and have a strong demarcation. Law enforcement, if there's somebody that we have a problem that is engaged in criminal activity, you be involved in that. But when it comes to theology, social activity, community programs, that's the community's jurisdiction. And all the President was saying is, he needs help in raising the voice of Muslims to counter ISIS. To us, that's what CVE means. Thank you, Salaam alaikum.
Okay, so I have four minutes.
I got a minute from her.
No problem, I'm happy you took my minutes. My name is Maria, and I'm going to share a few things with you starting from the end of my experience at the White House, when we had a three different workshop. The first workshop about women and how we can empower women. The second one about the importance of the youth in a society and in any community and how we can empower them and engage them. And the third one was about the importance of the work of an interfaith. And technically, I work with the three areas. I am a public speaker for almost 19 years. And I've been a member in the interfaith for almost 15, 17 years. And I empower women day and night. But I also work with the police department. Not because I'm part of the police, but I work with them. I am a senior chaplain with the LA Sheriff Department. So I work with inmates and I work with deputies and lieutenant and sergeant. And a long time ago, one of my best mentor and teacher said something important to me. He said, "If you don't present Islam the right way, someone else who doesn't know anything about Islam would represent Islam." And we don't want that. So since that day and until today, I am trying to do my best to present the true meaning of Islam. So it's not only in the Muslim community. We don't want anyone outside of our community to talk about Muslims. I need to speak about what I believe, how I practice, what concerns me, what concerns my kids, my women, my men, brother and sister. So that's what we need, to be engaged. Nobody will hear my voice if I'm not part of the society. And I want to share with you a Fiqh thing. And in Fiqh school, they will tell you, if you are in a masjid and the Imam is giving salaam and you somehow made your prayer and you're not part of the congregation, but you're sitting reading Quran and the Imam made a mistake, do you have the right to correct the Imam in his reading of the Ayah in the Quran? A lot of people do so. "Well, he made a mistake in the Quran, I have to fix that." Well, technically, based on four schools of thought, you're not allowed. The only time you can fix the Imam is when you're part of the congregation. So we can sit down and say, "The government needs to do that, and government needs to do that, and the government needs to do that," and I'm sitting home watching the scene. It is so easy to criticize. The hard part is be part of it. We don't need to criticize, we need to do something. A friend of mine, two weeks ago, said to me, "How many people said to you, 'Jazakallah Khair Maria for doing what you did'?" And I said, "Too many people, too many women." Say, "Mashallah, Maria does for all of us." And I always say, "I don't need you to praise me, I need to be on my side." Make a difference in society. Make a difference in the small community, be part of the interfaith, be part of volunteering in the library, at school, in the chief police. You don't want to go there, you don't have to. But a few years ago, I was invited for the first time to give an invocation in the city council. I'm probably the only woman who does that in the United States. Allahu Akbar, or maybe at least in Orange County. How many women are engaged? And I love the city council, or, I'm sorry if I missed who she is, but she said, "We need women to be engaged." It is so honor to be standing in front of the mayor during their city council and do a duha. This is a power. Then they're going to learn about us, they're going to engage us. So we need to be engaged as much as we can because we are American. At least our kids are American. They're going to grow up in this country, and I don't want them to face this kind of dual personality. Your home, you are a Syrian, Iraqi, or whatever, and outside, you're an American. No, he is who he is. Lineage is important, background is important, and that's what makes you not... and that's what makes you not sit so beautiful. And we need to be part of that. So I enjoyed my time at the White House, and I took a picture in the prayer room. And I was alone in the fifth floor, praying. And I took pictures of the Quran, as well as they had a book of the Bible, and the Mormon book, and the Torah. And on the other side, the Quran is sitting by itself, a big one. And I felt like, this is big. Yes, we can make a difference. This is what we can do. We want to make a difference, but it doesn't mean I'm going to be right all the time. No, I'm going to be wrong. But instead of telling me, instead of saying that Maria is wrong, please come to me. Come to me and share your opinion. Because one of the things that I learned in the Quran is that the first sense that Allah gave to us is the sense of listening. And we need to listen. Thank you so much.
It'll be hard to top your speeches. But, I'm Anila Lee, Salaam alaikum everybody. You may have heard, I ran for office a year ago. I ran for State Assembly District 74. I've been an advocate for Muslims, Muslim women, children. I'm a teacher by profession, so that's my job, I guess. I'm an advocate for education and children. After 9/11, I felt the need to actually get engaged with the mainstream community. Why? Because my daughter was called a terrorist. I was just like half a Ba'athar. Very happy, sitting at home, integrated. Felt like I had no need to get out there. But after my daughter was called a terrorist in her school, in a city, which is supposed to be the most integrated city in the US, and actually the world, they claim, I was really upset. And I came back, and I decided I'm going to meet with my friends, go to the school, make a complaint, but I'm actually going to do something about it. And I started Irvine Pakistani Parents Association. Why? Because I wanted everybody to know that Muslims are just like everybody else. We're here because we want to educate our kids, we want to send them to college, we want them to have a good life, and yes, to be good Muslims by their behavior, through their actions and their words. And, so, I got engaged in the community with that one nonprofit. And now that nonprofit has flourished into something really big, and we're making a good name. But that wasn't just me coming forward and saying, "I'm going to do something about it." I was backed by the entire community in the city of Irvine. In the same way, after 9/11, I'm a teacher, and I see what's happening. I'm also aspiring politician. So when I go and I meet liberals, who are really, really hardcore liberals, who stand with you and who shout with you, and they come to me, and they say, "Hey, Anila, you have to do something about the fact that everybody is saying Islam is Islam-violent." These are the friends who actually supported me. These are the friends who never thought anything other than Islam is what I see, what I see in my community. Islam is the Muslims that I see. These are the Muslims who started, people who started coming and telling me, "You've got to do something about it." And I felt like 9/11 had happened all over again. And when the liberals tell you this, there's a problem. Now, let me tell you, we have two choices as Muslims. We have the choice to be engaged in a conversation, to have a seat at the table, or to stand out, have our kids get marginalized, and have them get targeted, and then be susceptible to all that they see on the internet. So, those are the two choices. And I'm sure that we're going to make a choice to be inclusive, to become a part of our communities, and to actually get out there and talk to people. Now, here's the problem. I'm a teacher. And the other day, obviously, I work, I do a lot of work on the Holocaust. And I had a Holocaust speaker, and we started a conversation. One of the students said, and there was an article on ISIS, one of the students said, "Well, ISIS is Muslims, and they follow a god called Allah, and he teaches them to kill." If that is that perception of Muslims in a regular public school classroom, you can imagine how they're going to grow up, and then see that that's the Muslim. Muslims are all terrorists. Muslims are all part of ISIS. They sympathize with the ISIS. And that's when I felt that I had to do something more. And then I took out my book, which I'd written after 9/11, and started advocating for inclusion, for a tolerance curriculum for Muslims in a classroom. At the same time, on the opposite side, there was a student who, when we were talking about the Holocaust, said, "No, we should kill all the Jewish people. The Jewish people are..." Or they say, "They're killing the Palestinians." So I just, I know that student really well. And I said, "Tell me, are all the Jewish people killing the Palestinians?" And he said, "No." So I said, "Okay, so let's change our statement." Now, how many teachers can actually do that? A lot of teachers don't have the training. A lot of teachers don't have the will. They're afraid to discuss this ISIS issue in classroom, and I can tell you that. Well, we need to get engaged, and we need to get into our school systems and tell them that we want to go out there, and we want to talk about Islam that we follow. We're not violent. We are a religion of peace. Look at all of us. But we don't do enough of that. And like Sister Maria was saying, I go to places where I am the only Muslim woman. It's National Women's Political Caucus. The entire Womenhood of America is there, and I'm the only Muslim woman. I feel alone. I feel isolated. And I can imagine that if we don't take the path of being with everybody and having a seat at the table, then our kids tomorrow are going to be isolated, marginalized, and they will have an identity crisis. We can nip it in the bud by being engaged. And that's all I want to say to you. So if you have questions, you can ask me later.
Salaam alaikum. How's everybody doing?
All right.
Good. Man, you got a beautiful mask on. It's very artistic, Masala. You have a larger percentage of smiling human beings than other places I've been.
And a fantastic speaker.
And a fantastic speaker in Sister Maria Hani. She's wonderful. Absolutely, she has all of a point. Okay. I want to very quickly make three points. And I'm going to break each of them into twos. The first point I want to make is that there is a need for young Muslims to develop a dual literacy. To be more literate in two things. Number one, Islam. What's the difference between Shariah and Fiqh? What's the purpose of a madhab? What is the purpose of life on this earth? What are the goals of Shariah? We need to increase the literacy of young people in their understanding of Islam. So that they can push back against, hey, let's go to the bar, and hey, let's go fight for ISIS. The second literacy that we need to develop is a literacy of civics. To understand how to overcome the oppression that exists. To understand the architecture of social change and how it yields for a young Muslim in America the ability to change realities that are racist, and exclusionary, and oppressive. So we have to develop those two literacies. In the context of law enforcement encountering violent extremism, we have to understand that there are two perspectives within law enforcement, two ideologies, two philosophies on how to deal with the Muslims. One philosophy is represented by the NYPD and the intelligence apparatus of the NYPD. It is the approach of surveillance. It is the approach of assuming that Muslims are a part of the problem. It is the approach of assuming that wiretaps are necessary, that Muslim students that are in Ivy League educational institutions are more inclined to engage in terrorism and extremism. But there is a second philosophy among the people that have the guns within law enforcement. And that is the philosophy of partnership and cooperation with the transparency of knowing that this is complex. And we need to secure our rights as we increase our engagement. And so we are of the opinion that this moment in history that we have available to us is a moment for us to engage with those who have power, who are of a similar mindset, a similar philosophy, to ourselves and to our faith on how to engage with extremism. Finally, I want to say there are two models. There are two models of activism and quote-unquote solidarity. There is the model of exporting the opinions of your community, the agency and legitimacy of your community, and importing the opinion of special interest groups like the ACLU, et cetera. But then there is the model of true cooperation, in which special interest groups understand the agency of each community, and understand that we will not always be in line, and there will not always be an interest convergence, no matter what happens between us all of the... That is the purpose of cooperation. That is the purpose of solidarity. That is the purpose of cooperation. And so when our partners displace our agency, when they take away from us the ability to speak for ourselves, then they are damaging this potential partnership. And so I remind you of those three dualities. Because the world is complex. And our journey to Allah (ﷻ) is not easy. Yet we have been afforded an opportunity. "Fabi aye ala'i rapikuma hatu kandibain." Which of the favors of our Lord? The favor of democracy, or the favor of freedom, or the favor of literacy, or the favor of the Mercedes that are in the party? Which of the favors are we going to deny in our pursuit of justice? In our pursuit of freedom? You have my love, and you have my respects.
We're going to do, he would like to go Haroon first. Thank you. Now, we messed up on the whole timing system.
Why, what happened? Did you not...
You still have an extra minute.
Oh my God.
We reserved the time.
I was going to donate the time.
No, no, no.
We reserved the time.
Why do I have a question?
Can we leave questions for later, unless it's something about structure?
It is. Go ahead. So my understanding was that this was supposed to be about CVE, and not about motivation and about personal listening. So far, I have not heard anything about CVE.
I think these are personal reflections, individuals. We don't, I don't know Anila from Prok Prior, and I think, listening to what she does, knowing what Maria is actually, is a chaplain, and she invokes... I think this was like a personal information, that we get to learn who are these people. And then we have an hour and a half, so that now we know who we're talking to, we know what their reactions are. They have five minutes to do whatever they thought is appropriate. So it is their prerogative to choose and talk about whatever they want.
But I did mention the workshop, that it was done in the White House during...
It says counting on your time, so you better start.
You know, I was going to talk about CVE.
Yes. Good.
Bismillah, wa alaikum. It's a pleasure, honor to be here. Thank you to Brother Mohanad and all of the missionary community for putting this together. So, please, Brother Mohanad, can I get a one-minute warning? Yeah, thank you. So, really quickly, I'm going to get right into this. This past September, Department of Justice, Attorney General Eric Holder announced plans to roll out CVE programs in three pilot cities, Los Angeles, Minneapolis, Boston. This news came on the heels of the 13th anniversary of the 9/11 attacks, and on the heels of the news of ISIS's brutality in the Middle East. So, you know, it was an atmosphere where emotions were high, and the government was under pressure to take some kind of an action. Then, in December, Secretary Jay Johnson of Department of Homeland Security visited Southern California and met with Muslim leaders and Muslim communities at ICSGV. And at that meeting, CARE was president, and CARE submitted a letter to DHS that was co-signed by some of our partners like ACLU, Advancing Justice, Shura Council, where we raised some concerns regarding this program and its impact on our community, which I will list shortly. And then, in February, as we all know, as Brother Salam talked about, the White House summit took place, where representatives from these three pilot cities and also dignitaries from all over the world came together to have the discussion that they did. One thing that I would like to clarify is that CARE has always been engaged in CVE, at least on the discourse on CVE. Every time CARE has been reached out to, every time input has been solicited, CARE has attended that meeting. CARE has never turned down an invitation. We did not boycott the White House summit. You cannot boycott something you're not invited to. So, and even though, you know, engagement is a term, even boycotting is a form of engagement, but if you want to define engagement just as meeting, then in that case, the White House decided not to engage with CARE, America's largest civil rights organization, the organization that has its ear to the ground when it comes to civil rights abuses that our community suffers, then that is something that the White House should answer why was one of the largest Muslim organizations and the largest Muslim civil rights organization excluded from this very important conversation. So, some of the concerns about CVE. First of all, it is only focused on the Muslim community. One week before the summit took place, DHS, CNN reported that there's a DHS report that states that threat stemming from ideological violence is greater, if not, from white supremacist groups, from anti-German groups, is greater, if not, is equal to, if not greater, than the threat coming from groups that are inspired by Islam or foreign terrorist groups. So there is a disparity between where the threat is coming from, the numbers as Todd will go over, and this focus on the Muslim community. Also, what a CVE program looks like by definition, the program is meant to identify individuals who are headed towards the wrong path, who are headed down the wrong path to commit something terrible, inspired by ideology. And the way CVE programs work are by identifying these individuals by traits, by some of the things that they're saying, some of the things that they're reading, some of their behaviors. And that is extremely problematic. If somebody all of a sudden grows a beard and is completely antisocial, things that I did when I turned 15, because I could grow a beard at 15, you know, just normal teenage behaviors could be identified as indicators of somebody going down this path of violent extremism. Also, being critical of US foreign policy, having disagreements within a masjid. How many masjids are there in the US or in the world where there are no disagreements? Imagine if you are within a masjid, if two people disagree with one another, and one person doesn't like another person's interpretation, or feels like this person is too conservative. Or if somebody feels like, you know, this person is way too inspired by Ibn Dayniya or Sayyid Qutb, and we don't like the ideas that this person is engaging in. That is a red flag that could lead you to being kept an eye on, whether by people within the community who are participating in this program, or by law enforcement, which are going to be a part of this program. Department of Justice and DHS are both law enforcement agencies. So CVE that has been pushed by the White House and the government, by definition, law enforcement is a part of it. Lastly, I just want to talk about the groups that, you know, the broad rejection of CVE programs. Nationally, organizations like, partner organizations like ACLU that filed numerous lawsuits on behalf of Muslims advocating for our civil rights in some cases, during the LA mapping program. I'm going to take, Ahmet's one minute that he didn't use.
Wa alaikum.
Yes, very good.
That was a beautiful brother. So, you know, the mapping program where ACLU pushed for more details to be released about that. Right now, in Anaheim, the Anaheim Police Department is using stingrays to track down criminals using their cellphone signals. And this technology is a drag net technology, which also results in other people's cellphone information, including the content of text messages and phone calls being monitored. And ACLU is leading those lawsuits. So, here locally, lastly, the last point I want to make is Shura Council. Here locally, an umbrella organization representing over 70 Muslim organizations passed a resolution announcing that they do not want to see a CVE program within their community. And similarly, the other umbrella organization for national Muslim organizations released a similar statement. Thank you.
Salaam alaikum.
Okay, there we go. Salaam alaikum, everybody. Good to be here and see so many friendly faces, familiar faces. Salaam alaikum a little bit, so, very nice to be here. I think Brother Mohanad was right, and that we haven't heard a lot of details about the CVE program and really heard that discussed in detail. A lot of that is actually because there are no details that are out there. That the government hasn't really been upfront, hasn't been detailed in terms of what is programmed, what is pilot, quote-unquote, pilot programs are going to be. I think we do want to be especially cautious because they're calling this a pilot program, meaning it's a test, and if it goes well, whatever that means, we don't know. Then it's going to get a lot bigger and launch. We heard a lot of nice, like, nice words, and we saw some nice pictures, which are, you know, worth a thousand words at the beginning of the presentation. But, you know, I really wanted to take a second and question the neutrality of this approach. So this is a law enforcement-centered approach towards the Muslim community, being led by the local in the three pilot cities. It's being led by the Assistant US Attorneys, who are the lead prosecutors, the lead federal prosecutors in their cities. And I think we have a legitimate question to ask. Why is the government official who's being tasked to talk to the Muslim community and be the one who connects the Muslim community to these other needed resources? Why is it a law enforcement official? If our needs are related to psychological, if they're related to health, why isn't it somebody who's from Health and Human Services? Why is it Muslims and only Muslims who are put in this law enforcement interaction? And that law enforcement interaction, there are great reasons to interact with law enforcement. There are, you know, good values to community policing if it's done in a proper way, that community policing should be done, addressing the needs of the community, not addressing the needs of federal prosecutors, which I think is unfortunately what can happen in a federally pushed program. An example of great law enforcement interaction would be coming up in Irvine in just a couple of nights. The Irvine ICOI reached out to the Irvine Police Department. They're gonna have a public forum with the police chief on how to report hate crimes and hate incidences. That's an amazing example of law enforcement interaction and the type of thing we want to be doing. But we as community leaders and we as individuals have to ask when, to what degree, do we want to be involved with law enforcement? And I think it's inappropriate and dangerous to be involved with them and with the government generally as it comes to, quote-unquote, combating violent extremism. Looking at the neutrality of the language, which we heard some great things from Obama about Islam, we heard a lot of great things from George Bush about Islam. Really, if we go back and we look at their dialogue, the things that they say, it stays flat. George Bush didn't use the phrase Islamic terrorism either. The reason the right wing is freaking out about Obama is because he's Obama. You know, they chased him for two years by saying he was born in Kenya. So we don't want to give a lot of credit to, you know, their accusations. They're not based in reality. Unfortunately, neither necessarily is this neutral view, that this is not something that we're targeting at Muslims, that this is something that's about everybody and supposed to be in every community. If we take a look at the op-ed that the President wrote in the LA Times right before the CVE event, it was 14 paragraphs for long. He never uses the phrase Islamic terrorism. That's very true. In seven of those paragraphs, he mentioned specific Islamic or Muslim terrorist groups by name. Al-Shabaab, Boko Haram, ISIS, or ISIL as they say it because they don't want to remind us that that's in Syria, but that's a separate issue. So in seven paragraphs, they specifically mentioned Muslim terrorist names, Muslim terrorist groups. Five paragraphs, they don't mention, they mention terrorism. The President mentions terrorism, but not specifying where it's from. Who's the reader thinking of? Especially after they just read a paragraph mentioning a Muslim terrorist group. One paragraph, they talk about terrorist attacks on the Sikh temple and then also on Jewish communities, and specifically identify those as hate attacks and terrorism. In another paragraph, he mentions the attacks in North Carolina, declining to identify the motive of the killer. Not sure why Muslims can't be victims. We can only apparently be perpetrators of these types of crimes. So this language is not neutral. It is targeted at Muslims, and that targeting is not fair. Muslims are not more violent. Muslims are not a problem. That image that is out there is an image, is just an image. I don't believe it matches up with reality. That's not my experience in the Muslim community and that's not what the facts and figures that have been put out there show. Most recent study, or a very recent study, University of North Carolina, looking at 180,000-plus homicides, I'll finish up on this point, looking at 180,000-plus homicides since 9/11 to present, 37, I believe, was the number committed by American Muslim terrorists. Out of 190,000 approximately, 37 committed by American Muslim terrorists. In 2012, 66 killings were killed by white gunmen, white men gunmen, mass killings by white men gunmen. Somehow, I'm not getting profiled. Somehow, that 66 is not getting into the mix the way all of those crimes committed by Muslims are. We're being treated different. We're being pushed into this law enforcement, into this law enforcement mentality of engagement, into this law enforcement framework. That in itself is dangerous and something that we as the community need to avoid.
Thank you so much. With that, we'll, I don't know why this keeps coming.
I turned it off.
You're very good at that.
Saving batteries. So this here, I think, does that give us an idea of what are the issues out here? The idea is, there is a great program, which I, as a person, have suffered the consequence of terrorism. In Jordan, eight years ago, as we all know, film director Mustafa Al-Aqad and his daughter Rima, were the two victims of the bombing that took in about four hotels simultaneously in Amman, Jordan. And this is just was tip of the iceberg on the amount of terrorism and bombings and suicide bombings and the bombs in markets and that are happening in Iraq and in Syria and Afghanistan. And then the issues started coming in 9/11, 7/7, in London and Madrid. So the issue of having the terrorism around the world is real and we're all living it. And if you haven't touched your life immediately, the fear is that this is gonna be so prevalent and happening all around. And very often it's said, it's not that if it's gonna happen, it's when it's gonna happen. And with the extremism that we're seeing in places like France and London and with some of the individuals on the internet being radicalized and fighting in Syria and Iraq and elsewhere, does make us worry because these are coming from Muslim communities. These are Muslim children, Muslim kids. So at the same time, we can't just put our heads in the sand. This is a Muslim problem. But also, there are other people that are violent, other than Muslims in this country. And if the law wants to apply for one, it should apply to all. This is the background that I'm getting, that I'm hearing through here. And it seems some organizations have elected to cooperate and be part of the spearheading this effort, being Los Angeles. And in the top of that has been Salam Al-Mariati and Impact and people that have, you know, like, I assume, Anila and Maria and Ahmad are actually involved somehow in propagating and helping and making sure that dialogue and interaction in the success of this program is moving forward. And we found out that CARE had, because it's a civil liberties organization, it is worried about civil liberties and human rights and the rights of every American citizen. And often it works with the ACLU to make sure that our rights are protected and it's not a slippery slope where suddenly we become a segment of the population that it's okay to abuse. So with that, I'm gonna actually give to you, before we take questions, because I would like to go exactly the same direction again. Give you an opportunity to deal with the issue as you hear it and then we will open questions and answers.
... We're just as involved in civil liberties and reform of these policies on the inside as CARE is going with the ACLU. And the fact is, we need both. They are not mutually exclusive. If we were sophisticated enough, we would understand that they would actually help in each other's effort. Number two, this problem that they're all talking about didn't start with the announcement on September 2014. This problem started right after 9/11, okay? In 2004, 85% of the Congress supported a bill that was called Intelligence Reform, that supported surveillance programs. It was called Go Ahead and Preemptings. You heard about the low dive sting operation, Newburgh Sting? Orange County, what happened here? It was from this bill. In 2007, again, the vast majority of the Congress, and that this time is a Democratic Congress, supported the 9/11 Recommendation Implementation Act, which said you go and prevent ideological motivated acts of violence. So with or without CVE, there's a problem, okay? CVE is a reform, in our opinion, from counterterrorism. Counterterrorism was law enforcement heavy. CVE now is community heavy. It is community-driven program. And no, they are not going to determine whether a person is extremist or not based on whether they wear a beard or not, or things like that. What we're talking about is if we find a troubled person in our community, it is the community's responsibility to intervene, not law enforcement. If we find problems in the way somebody is thinking about our religion, it is the community's responsibility to help that individual, not law enforcement. And the fact is, brothers and sisters, there is a problem of extremism. As I said, the Twitter accounts, that's one issue. There was a person arrested last week in Virginia for trying to recruit kids into ISIS. And if there is one case, we all know, it's one case to men. Unless we get involved on this issue, if there is, God forbid, another incident and all we do is come out with a press release saying, "We have nothing to do with this." I think the American public will just not, they won't buy it. That's what our eye is on, is on the American public, to define what CVE should be. It's about community-led programs to deal with this problem so that law enforcement doesn't have to be responsible for doing all these programs in our community. It's actually pushing law enforcement to do law enforcement work and giving more empowerment to the community.
Thank you, Salam.
Muhammad?
Yes.
We are saying CVE. What does this abbreviation mean?
It's countering violent extremism.
Okay, then, nobody said it in the beginning.
It was my duty to do it and I did it, so.
No, no, they're all speakers on that topic.
So it's CVE is countering violent extremism.
Okay. Now I understand.
So here is my part. Few things. Number one, we are a little bit different than the two other cities, Boston and Minneapolis. And I'm gonna talk about those two cities first. Boston and Minneapolis, they had an issue with al-Shabaab. I don't know if you have any idea, but it's like a terrorist group in Africa. And they were trying to recruit and they did succeed in recruiting a lot of youth going back to Africa and fight. So the community launched a wake-up call. So everybody got engaged to help to minimize and educate and raise awareness about the good being here and the bad of going there and the mentality and the radicalism of al-Shabaab. And that's the reason they came to present their program and how much they were engaged and what they were successful with, the youth, women, men. What makes our program is a little bit different than them, that we don't have a problem here in LA. We never had a problem with recruiting as much as any other public state or those two cities. But the idea was here that we are starting as a prevention. Before we have issues, before people start recruiting any of the youth, let's be more engaged, let's be positive, let's be proactive. And that's something that I felt like this is good about the program of ending. The second thing is that, one of the things that is repeated on Tuesday with the Vice President, and the same thing was repeated during the speech of President Obama, and from the different speaker, this is not only about extremism against Muslims or Islam. This affects everybody. And we had two people coming from Europe, from Holland and France. They talked about their problem, but it also said, this is not only about Muslims. We're not talking about only extremism within the Muslim community. It happens all the time and they kept repeating that. But we have three models, happen to be Muslims leading that because of the chaos that's happening in Africa, in ISIL and al-Qaeda. And that's the idea, let's get the community engaged, let's get the Imam engaged instead of going to the police as a first line. The police and the government will be the second line. The first defense is us.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you. Countering violent extremism. When I talk about this to my mainstream American friends, they don't know it either. They haven't heard of it and they want me to explain it to them. And the way I explain it is that the Muslim community is engaged in the policy, in what our government is doing and how it's combating bigotry throughout the world, not just in the United States. And that's what we heard our Vice President say at the White House, that this is not just a US problem, this is a global problem. And so, isn't it better that as Muslims we unite ourselves rather than divide ourselves on this issue? We need to be united at this point in time. This is a very critical moment for Muslims. And either we engage or we isolate and we stay out of the conversation. Whether or not you're included or not, you're still a part of the conversation because you're a Muslim and you're an American and you live here and your kids are going to get, they're gonna live here and they want jobs here. We don't want our kids to be discriminated when they go for a job and they have a beard or they have hijab. Is that happening? Yes, it is happening. In Irvine, the other day, right after the North Carolina killing of the three innocent people, there was a girl in hijab, she was just leaving. Somebody came up to her, this big guy, and he said, "You're a terrorist and that was just the beginning. We're coming for you." Did you hear about that? No, because those parents who don't wear, the mother doesn't wear a hijab, she wanted her daughter to take that hijab off the moment she saw what was happening. That's her right. She has a right to keep her hijab. And that's what our government does. It protects our rights. That's why we need to engage with the Department of Justice. So the moment that girl called me, my friend, whose daughter was called a terrorist and threatened, I called the Department of Justice. I have friends there. Why? Because for the past 10 years, I have engaged with them and my organizations have built a relationship of trust. If I didn't have that relationship, I couldn't call them. What would I do? I would call people who don't know and who they don't really want to go and talk to because they've always felt mainstream Americans. Well, today, you don't want to hear what they're saying. They're very upset and they are upset with everybody in the world right now. Is that what we want to happen to our parents whose kids have been targeted? I've been targeted, my daughter's a little targeted, and I found a way to get back. Counter that extremism. Counter that bigotry through your actions and your words and your engagement in this community. Because guess what, I'm gonna die here, but I want to leave kids who are integrated, who are never discriminated against, and who have equal rights. CVE program, the foundation of it, is based on protecting civil rights. And we should be happy that we're Muslims, are a part of it, and not somebody else is riding in. If you grew up in the UK and you grew up in France in the 70s and 80s, you would know what discrimination is. And so, if you have any doubt that Muslims are not engaged, CVE does a lot of interfaith. That's what we've been doing since 9/11. It's nothing new. Building relationships with law enforcement. You've seen pictures, they're all over with LAPD Chief Downing, Dr. Hatun. You've seen everything. That's CVE, building relationships of trust. But a lot of our community members, let me tell you, there's another girl in Irvine whose parents are struggling. She wants to join the ISIS. What do I do? Do I have rights? Well, if I work with law enforcement, yes, I can do something about it. I can help empower that parent to take charge and do something. But if I have no connection with the law enforcement, I have no protection and I have no voice, I'm not gonna be able to do anything. And that girl, who is very mainstream, who went to a very liberal college, she might just join the ISIS and there, you know, we've lost a good Muslim.
You know, we have heard enough, I think, that the interaction starts.
Okay, that the interaction starts.
I would like to start.
I would like to start with Rima Shetanat first.
Okay.
And it's a lady.
That's fine, I'm you.
In this measure, we give preference to ladies.
I will agree with that. I see her hand.
Okay, Assalamualaikum. I have a couple of, only a little bit of response to what they said.
I'm gonna start the five-minute timer.
Yes, yes, yes.
You have one minute.
So there is seven of them. I get five minutes for each one of them, right? Okay, but first of all, I wanted to assure my Muslim sisters that they're not alone. Because, as you know, Sister Tahara Akhmad, she did invocation, we got her to do invocation for labor, South County labor. We got her to do invocation for other general public groups for, on the Flag Day and everything, because we want to, we had them come in and do invocation at the Democratic Party of Orange County. So there are other Muslim sisters who are doing that and you're not alone. And she's now the chaplain at Johns Hopkins University too. And Sister Anila, I know you're not alone because I used to be the president of the National Women Political Caucus in Orange County. So you're not the only Muslim.
I need you back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you're not the only Muslim. There are others too. And the other thing that I would like to say is, when you, what concerns me is that I've heard from all of you saying, "CVE," and then you say "Muslim." CVE, Muslim. CVE, Muslim. That is unacceptable to me because you're perpetuating what the media is saying is CVE is Muslim. That is unacceptable. You should say CVE. There's new Nazis who commit that atrocity in Wisconsin. They committed the atrocity in other states. They committed the atrocity in Chapel Hill, in North Carolina, I'm sorry. But, and then there are Muslims, but you don't say CVE and Muslim. That is unacceptable. The other thing that I have here is...
You have a question, Rima?
I do have a question. I would like them to clarify something for me because I've studied this CVE program. Now, we've all been engaged even before 9/11. And that's why the interfaith and other with law enforcement before 9/11. That's why Orange County hasn't seen the lashback after 9/11 because we have been doing the engagement with law enforcement at other agencies. This is not something new to us that we need to start doing right now. The other thing is, you need to explain to me... The other thing is, you need to explain to me, when you say all the resources are going, of CVE are going to, addressing truly just the Muslim community, you are making us less safe. When you put all the resources, and you say CVE and Muslim, and you're putting all the resources to counter extremism within the Muslim community, you're making us less safe, because you have the other groups, the neo-Nazis and others, who are committing 95% of violent extreme actions here in the U.S. And we're only doing five. But even one act of violence is unacceptable. Let's not talk about percentages. The other thing is, it also perpetuates for perceptions that it's only the Muslims who are committing violent crimes in the U.S. and not others. That is also unacceptable. And it also sends a dangerous signal to all members of the public that, hey, be careful, your Muslim neighbor can be a terrorist. If your Muslim neighbor wears a beard, if your Muslim neighbor wears a hijab, if your Muslim neighbor... I'm just saying the perception, Salam. You know what I'm saying? One last, one last. And it's only, and it also, you equate religious and political activism with committing violence. What this does is that when you say law enforcement, I'm just letting you know what I'm hearing. You know, I've been engaged for a long time, so I'm letting you know what I'm hearing. So when you say law enforcement, when you say these are the groups that are going to be monitoring or policing or what the community is doing, the people who have inclination to do something or are, you know, want to go and join an organization or do something, they're not gonna come anymore to the mosque. Or they're not gonna...
Thank you.
So can you explain that to me?
Thank you, Rima.
No question.
Address that to me, yes, Todd and Prit.
Well, just real quickly, I don't think that they've been saying that. I think that's what the U.S. government has basically been saying and been doing. And I think that, you know, so I don't wanna put that on these speakers. I think they've got a different view of what CVE is. However, the way that the funding is coming in, the government focus definitely has been on Muslims, and that definitely isn't fair.
Also, yeah, you can respond. I encourage each and every one of you to listen to the full speech of the President on this issue. See, he addressed everything you mentioned. This is just a glimpse of what our experience was. So, you know, leading to misperceptions, we'll try to correct it. We never said anything about beard and other...
But please, I mean, answer those questions. It's important to me to know, if, what does CBRV want me to do? CBRV? Okay, so go ahead and answer that. CBRV?
Okay, let me just need to, to a couple of points very, very quickly. There is no the CVE program. That's a fallacy in this conversation. There's no such thing as the CVE program. The government is saying there are different realities for Muslims in different parts of this country. We, as the government, federal agencies, are creating task forces for coordination. We need the Muslim community to be a part of that conversation as to what is going to happen. So there is no such thing as the CVE program. That's a fallacy. Number two, the intervention component, this issue of monitoring and this language of policing, of course, we don't support any monitoring or any policing or anything. The intervention component is not defined. It is iterative. It yields to the perceptions and opinions of the community. It is what we are inviting people to come and amend and change in structure and inform pursuant to the civil rights and civil liberties interest of the community. Let me just answer a couple of other fallacies. This question that Todd raises is a very important question. Why is the Assistant U.S. Attorney a part of the task force as it relates to CVE? Because that is the only person that can bring a terrorism charge for the federal government in our area. If that person is a part of the conversation, the interjection of law enforcement when the guns come in is delayed in the process of intervention, and there is more space available for the community to engage. And that U.S. Attorney is the daughter of a Japanese-American who was interned in American concentration camps and sent to the President and to the Vice President over why that body will there be a systemic discrimination of Muslim-Americans pursuant to this CVE effort. This issue of CVE is just about Muslims. This emotionalism that CVE is just about Muslims, it is absolutely not true. Timothy McVeigh is CVE gone bad. Waco, Branch Davidians, the Oklahoma City bombing, the Unabomber, all of these are individuals who could have yielded to a countering violent extremism narrative that could have pushed back against what it is that they have done. We are talking about Muslims because we are Muslim. And we have a religious obligation before God to clean up our own house if there are challenges within our house. And if there is anybody here that feels like there is no radicalization or extremism among young Muslims anywhere in the world, then we need to have a conversation about the realities that exist. If there is anyone here that feels that there is no way that that radicalization will ever be a part of our American reality, then maybe you should check your perception of America's exceptionalism and the commonalities between Muslim-American life and life in other parts of the world. We are not encouraging monitoring, we are not encouraging policing, we are not encouraging wiretaps. We agree with every critique that the Council on American-Islamic Relations has raised. But we do not believe that that is the totality of the picture. And if you see the totality of the picture and you believe in our good intentions, then you will see that there are two reasonable approaches to this challenge.
Okay. Zahra, you're very, really very passionate. Yeah, of course. I saw you shaking your head. Before I give you the mic, please do, there is either misconception or there is misreading. So let's, I mean, this is the whole point. You're very passionate, and I love your passionism, but it's coming across very strong. But thank you for doing that.
I see Shik Yasser's hand in the back, though. So I think I've obligated to let him say something.
Sure. Just very, I have just two quick points. One is, listening to Ahmed and Salam, I think you're excited about CVE in hope of what it can offer. And I see that CARE is apprehensive because of potentially what it can become. So I think that the CVA that Salam and Ahmed are talking about is not really the CVE that is on paper. I think that's what they would hope CVE would turn to be. And the other point that I wanted to make also is this idea of, and with due all respect, we had an FBI director who was at our masjid, in the Irvine Masjid. At the same time, that same director was sending information to our masjid. So the idea that the President spoke very nicely, the FBI is on the table, I look at this and I say, "I've been there before, we had you here before." That is not exciting. That is not exciting. And it's not, this is not meaningful. It's got to be, it's got to be more than just nice words that are targeted towards the Muslim community, more than just a potentially nice program.
Thank you, Sheikh Yasser. Right there, we got Hillary response, Todd, and then we have two questions. One minute. Ahwana has response.
So I think Sheikh Yasser, I'll be quick. Sheikh Yasser said a lot of what I was gonna say. I would just say, you know, it's a good idea to watch the President's speech, but of course, that's the discourse that's meant for us to hear. That's, you know, and I don't mean this in a pejorative way, that's propaganda. Like, that's just what it is, as a matter of fact. If something being said for public consumption, so that we will agree with it. What we wanna do more than just look at what's being said is let's look at the actions that are being taken. CVE is not something new. It is an expansion of these ongoing programs that have been taking place, that regardless of what they're bringing in, other resources are going through law enforcement. I don't think it's appropriate that the person who's responsible for charging crimes of terrorism is the one who's designated to talk to Muslims. That means, again, we're operating on this strong connection between Muslims and terrorism that is only the existing framework. It is only gonna keep us taking us down the wrong path that we've been on. Now, we can look at our history. We don't just have to worry about what it's gonna turn into be. We can look at the history of law enforcement interaction with the American-Muslim community. We know it here locally, with Craig Monte, with other issues that have taken place in local masajid. We know about it in many, many cases. Agent provocateurs, informants going into mosques. This going on while there's this CVE or this, you know, law enforcement discourse going on. At the same time, in addition to the Craig Monte case here, at the same time that this NYPD mapping project is going on, they've got 20 officers who are designated to do outreach to the American-Muslim community. Two full-time, two full-time employees doing outreach to the American-Muslim community. Consistently, we see out of these outreach meetings when the documents are given, which is very difficult. The government doesn't disclose these documents. They typically come out through leaks. The AP won a Pulitzer on doing a lot of the stuff out of the NYPD case. When we look at these documents, we see this simple path to radicalization, which includes markers of religiosity. And we also see information gathered in these outreach or community liaison meetings ending up in law enforcement databases. We see in New York, we see a collection of, from community meetings, being done for good purposes, to build relationships between law enforcement and Muslims. We see information about the Muslims who attended those meetings ending up in law enforcement databases, the mosques they attend, the political opinions that were discussed at the meeting, people's race, people's ethnicity, people's national origin. There is no reason for the government to be undergoing this type of, this intelligence gathering, not investigation. This isn't a unique experience of American Muslims either. We look historically, this is a longstanding interaction between law enforcement and other American minority communities. We could talk about Countel Pro, which took place during the '60s and '70s. Marguerite Hill, recently a founder of Muslim Art, recently wrote a piece about this. Sahar Aziz draws some parallels to this in a Law Review article that she just did. She's a law professor and former DHS official, so she's got a little bit of the inside game. So, sure, let's look at what's being said, let's also look at what's being done and what's been done to our community.
What about other...
Thank you, Todd. Please, if we could, Samir.
No, ladies, ladies.
One lady already asked, I'm gonna make it really quick, because I do have to go pick my girls next door. My name is Samir. I also happen to be a community member. My daughters go to school next door. Also, I'm an education committee. First of all, just hearing the panel that is actually for, let's say, CVE, I heard confusion, honestly. Some people are saying it's a pilot program already in existence, some people are saying it's not a CVE program, some people are saying it's for Muslims only, some people are saying it's not for Muslims only. It's very confusing to hear you guys, right?
We didn't say it's not for Muslims.
The only question we've heard is answer.
I heard it's for Muslims, and I also heard it's not for Muslims. But the point is this, we are trying to raise our kids, we're trying to tell them that there is nothing different between them and the rest of the community. We are telling them the exact same justice, laws, protocols that apply to every American applies for them. And now you are telling me there might be a special Muslims program that I should prepare my kids to be aware of or be ready for that is only targeting Muslims. Then why are we here, what are we talking about? And that's the question, because it's very confusing to hear about it. A pilot program was mentioned about three cities.
I agree with you, Samir. I'm very confused as well, and I think, wasn't it, we're talking about a CVE program, next thing you're saying there is no such thing as a CVE program?
No, I'm just sharing with what is the confusion.
Let me explain what I mean by that.
Samir, sorry.
Look, it's a point, it's an issue of philosophy. When you say the CVE program, it assumes that there is a predestined, predetermined structure and action that we are asking the community to be a part of. That is not what's happening. What's happening is there is an opportunity, a historic moment, in which what we have been asking for is being offered, for us to be a part of the solution, for Todd to come to the government and say, "We have a problem with how you're engaging." The National Director, the Executive Director of CARE, was just in a CVE conference in Saudi Arabia in Mecca, sitting next to the Mufti of Saudi Arabia. This is bad, but that's okay? This is outrageous. We are Americans, this is our country, this government works for us, it is funded by our tax dollars. When they make a mistake, we tell them. And when they violate our rights, we sue them. But if there is an opportunity for us to come and engage in an intelligent discourse and bayen, then we should be a part of that. And that is all we are saying, we are saying nothing more than that.
We already are, with our local law enforcement, we already are working in this.
Wonderful, then we're on the same page. Done.
I'm confused, what is this thing? We already have this inside left.
Let me actually, could I, you specifically brought up an issue that involves my organization. I would like to respond to that. CARE did not boycott the White House event. We have never said we are not going to get involved with the federal government.
Why didn't you invite it?
Why do we, let's ask the White House.
Why do you think?
Why do I think we didn't invite it? Because we sue the government too much, because we are not, yes, we do. Oh my, excuse me, Ahmed? Do I get a minute to speak, please? Shubha.
My understanding, tell me if true, my understanding, CARE has been singled out because they have been doing certain work. And they tried to say, and I'm sharing you what I know, because this is what our community, I believe, this is my layman knowledge, and I would like to know the answer, it's important to me as well. I understood that because there's a certain member who was a member of the Board of Directors or the founding members of CARE.
I don't think that that's...
I'm telling you what I'm, without being told, is that it is that particular member who was found to have links to PLO or some links to some Palestinian organization, that was the reason that they would be fighting them, and that's why they're not being invited. Please enlighten us. So you have two questions before you.
Sure.
One, why is CARE not invited? Two, what specifically about the program and what Ahmed said?
So, you know, I really can only guess as to why CARE is not invited. I, you know, we would have to have somebody who would ask them. And we heard a lot of talk, we tried to. We heard a lot of talk of today about Muslim unity, us coming together. I hope those that were there, present, asked that question. Why isn't the largest American-Muslim civil rights group present? Okay, that's nice. I hope that those questions were asked, and I hope that, and let me finish talking, Ahmed, and then you will get the mic plenty, you already have. So I hope those questions were asked, and I hope they will continue to be asked until a good answer is given. So that's why we weren't there at the White House, in terms of why were we there in Saudi Arabia? Because we were invited, because it was a counterterrorism conference going on in Saudi Arabia. We were invited to attend. My boss, Nihadawat, attended, along with, you know, officials, yes, from Saudi, officials from other places in the Gulf, you know, with the Grand Imam of Al-Azhar, with officials from all over the Muslim world, on a conversation about what are the root causes of terrorism. Nihadawat delivered in Arabic a letter or a paper that told them, one of whom, the root causes of terrorism is the suppression of democracy and the suppression of civil society. That paper is available in Arabic on the internet. If anybody wants to Google it, they can see the message that was given. I'm very proud that we were there. We should have been there. We can't just say, "We're not gonna talk." We're talking about counterterrorism, and we say, "Oh, we don't wanna talk to the Saudis, we don't wanna talk to the people who we disagree with, we don't wanna talk to the people who we fear might have a link to these violent groups." That's who we need to be talking, that's who we need to be having this conversation with, not with the federal government and not with federal government law enforcement.
So are you suggesting that we shouldn't, us, be talking to the government? I mean, I'm...
No, no, we should absolutely be talking, we should be talking to the government. CARE should be talking to the government 100%. I think community leaders and community members need to make a choice about what degree and to what level they talk to the government, and particularly with law enforcement. And the advice, why? Because of the history of surveillance and the history of entrapment of the American-Muslim community by law enforcement. As long as we continue to operate within, as long as we continue to operate within the law enforcement framework, it will continue to lead to our marginalization, it will continue to lead to our stigmatization, and 100% being administered by DOJ and DHS is a law enforcement framework. Yet DOJ, the person who administers the grants, is the Department of Homeland Security. This is a completely, this is a law enforcement-led program. It's not, you know, there could be community-driven elements of it, but to say it's a community-driven or community-led project that launched at a three-day White House summit, that has $15 billion of federal money behind it, I just, I don't, I... There could be good community elements to it, but this is something that is being pushed upon us by the federal government.
Thank you, thank you. I will, if you, let me just continue with that. I cannot continue all directions. I have Said, the lady was second, and then...
First.
No, you were, you were second.
Salaam alaikum. I really praise your work, all of you, whether CARE or Impact and all the activists. I wanna just mention one thing. From my activism, I learned not to trust the government. And if you wanna trust them, trust that girl first, that's number one. Number two, I just wanna remind you that our community been targeted even far before 9/11, during the secret evidence, and nobody talked about that. So when you guys went to the White House, I would like to know if anybody asked the President that we are meeting here to discuss the terrorism and because of ISIS. But why you President and our government looked the other way around when ISIS was developing in Syria? Why now all of a sudden the attention on ISIS? And let me tell you why. Because ISIS meant to be in Syria, to do the turmoil, and to serve certain interests. But when ISIS stepped their boundary and went into Iran and threatened the oil, now we want to fight ISIS. So my point to you all, it's really not the government concerned about our safety here, because if they were, they would have listened to us and stopped ISIS from day one. They have all the surveillance. They know exactly how they are entering Syria. They know how they are getting their support and their weapons. But now, all of a sudden, they are so big of a threat simply because they went to Iran. So all my recommendation to you is that CARE, IMPACT, and all the other organizations, you guys should have been engaged from day one, when we talked to all of you to be involved with the Arab Spring, because the Arab Spring is the key to what we are witnessing today. Thank you.
Thank you, Said. You can tell Said talks with passion because he was very involved in that, those stages. Do you, anybody wants any special comments on that?
Let's ask all the questions and they can...
Okay, let's ask five questions, deliver it to five, and then they can answer because we're approaching a 50...
Okay, I'll be fast. I'll be really fast. Salaam alaikum. I wanted to appreciate everybody on the panel. I'm, you know, supporter of IMPACT and CARE. And what I did want to say is I'm hearing two narratives from, you know, within our community. And as a parent, and you know, my parents came as immigrants from Afghanistan. And I'm hearing the one side talking about engagement within the US government, which is what I hope for my voice to be able to do. When I sat with my African-American friends from my Minority Fellowship Conference, and I told them that they invited us, that the leaders of the African-American community told me, "I wish we got that seat in the 60s. We wish we had this invitation." Yes, there's not justice. I believe, I believe that there is a path that we are struggling to get to. But if any of us, all of us generationally are immigrants to this country, if any of us even had that seat at our own governments in Afghanistan, in Pakistan, in Palestine, in Jordan, which one of us could have actually gone into our kingdoms and said, "Hey, you're marginalizing us. Hey, we don't have these rights." We all left, I want, I hear two narratives, and I want my kids to be able to say, "Hey, I tried, I pushed, I engaged, I was welcomed." You know, I'm kind of tired of this victim minority group that we're being clumped in. We might be, you know, under surveillance. I agree with you guys. Those are the hardships we're struggling, minorities before us struggle. But I'd rather be sitting there and listening and talking, even if it's a corrupt government, because in my homeland, my parents couldn't do that. They have no rights. They have no rights. All of us fled those countries so we could live in a country where we have the right to engage with our governments. And now, as soon as we start to engage, no, we need to hold back because of the history. People have done this before us.
Who said hold back?
We said hold back in a law enforcement context. We have never said against engagement.
Todd, hold that thought, respond to this. Here's a question about engaging when we have the opportunity. Second question.
Yeah, the question is, why you guys are disagreeing? Well, what is the goal? What is the goal? You keep missing the goal. You keep missing the picture. Don't disagree enough of disagreement, what it led us, where it led us. CARE group, God be with you. IMPACT group, God be with you. These people are working so hard for years, Maria, Nayla, and everybody. There is a lot of people behind the picture, behind the picture, working so hard. Please, focus on the goal. We need to protect our communities. What to do? I get one lesson out of all this. I have to be engaged. My role, I have to be working with the interface, because this is what my passion. Mr. Todd, your passion is something else. Mr. Ahmed, your passion is something else. Work in your area, and together, we can protect our communities. I'm a mom, I'm a mom, and I'm gonna be a grandma. So this is, I'm really afraid if you continue disagreeing.
Thank you. Good advice. Who's taking notes? Last question, too. Please, we have a chance to answer. We have three more questions. I can answer them all.
I want to thank the two ladies. We need them to be engaged.
Yeah, well, good emails. I'm gonna give them to you. I think the last message was a great message. I have all the respect to CARE and IMPACT, and I would love to help both of them. But I think you guys are both wrong by fighting each other, and it's really a shame, to be honest with you. And I have to say, no, no, I'm gonna say something. I'm not gonna mention names. I was in one of the events, and I told one of the CARE people. I said, "Why don't you guys help IMPACT? Why don't you guys work together hand in hand?" He says, "We do." I said, "No, there's this issue, this issue, this issue." He did not work on it. And finally, he got frustrated with me. What did he tell me? "Well, we have 34 offices, they have two offices." Well, a shame on you. So I'm being upfront. I want you to look around here. How many young person, American born in this room, right now? How many? Stand up.
Three, four, five, six.
None of us who's sitting here, who's not young-born American, will ever be make the difference, except them. How many of CARE and IMPACT, which I know you have a program to help the young people, is really pushing for the young people? The people you take to Washington don't represent 1% of the young kid. So I'm sorry to tell you, you're gonna fail miserably if you don't focus on young people. I'm gonna finish. Let me tell you about hate crime. No, it's important. When my cousin were killed in Chapel Hill, what was the media were saying? It was over a parking dispute. Not one single politician was there to say it was a hate crime. In fact, one of the councilwomen in Raleigh, North Carolina, they congratulated the killer, literally. So, until the media came up and they started to talk, what was about hate? The guy who was walking around, he used to go to Yusuf and Razan, and he told them, "I don't like you. I don't like the way you look. I don't like the way you dress." And he finally killed them, both of them at home. So, if we don't work together, we work with those young people who I really admire for being here. None of us, the people, the immigrant, will do anything because I am sorry to tell you, we all lazy, we all talk, but we do nothing. We are a bunch of talker, we are a bunch of flag raiser, but we don't take action. Unless every one of us will have the guts and the dare to tell his kids, "Go out and join the State Department. Go out and join the military. Go out, join the Justice Department." We will not do anything. That's all I want to say. We're gonna end up one, two, three, and then we will add that. So, thank you, sir.
Sure, I have a question about, I think, I think it really is the elephant in the room, which is for IMPACT in particular, which is safe spaces. And the idea behind safe spaces is exactly those types of things with regard to what we have in NYPD and other places around the world, or especially in Europe, radicalization or radicalization theory, what you read, what you watch. Are you a good Muslim? Are you a bad Muslim? And we're gonna have special classes of Muslims that are going to find these are bad, these are good people, these are bad people. And you're gonna have some sort of criteria set, aside from other sorts of criticisms. I'd like to, you know, that there's, that might have been your ticket to the White House as to that, and you may want to, you may want to address that. The other thing is, who actually, what was the criteria for people being invited to the White House to represent Muslims at this conference dedicated to the idea of rooting out violence among Muslims? And so, we have, we do, we know that you, we know some of you are invited. We know IMPACT has a very good relationship. And obviously, you do, you do a lot of, you say a lot of good things, and you're, you know, you're, you've been a part of this community for a while. I don't understand, for example, Anila Ali being here. If you can clarify your role. You are, you are interviewed, as I understand it, by the Clarion Fund, which is an Islamophobic organization. And you are also a supporter of Israel, as I understand it. Is that true?
Next question, please.
It's fairly clear where the two positions are. My question is addressed to CARE. So, there are suspicions, I understand that, right? But do you think, do you actually think that being sitting on the table, sitting on the table, all the groups who are sitting on the table, can they actually not address those concerns that you have? And if they can address those concerns, then we're on the same side. That's my question.
So the last two questions, Rima, you must give it to him, and then you'll... And we started with you, Lele.
Salaam alaikum. Thank you all for engaging and participating in these activities. So I really believe in focusing on the solution here, right? So we haven't talked yet about the solution, how to address this situation. I believe the core of the solution has to start with unity, which is missing, obviously, here. And I was at your council when CARE came and presented. It was not a united approach. My suggestion here is that we commit in this meeting to meet within a month for all of these Islamic organizations, CARE, IMPACT, Shura Council, other Islamic organizations. I need you each to commit to meet within a month and agree on one united force. One united force to reach to the White House and Congress and say, "Let's work on the rules of engagement. Let's change the narrative," right? So you believe the narrative has to be changed, but the White House disengaged you because of the way you're trying to engage. So, but if we unite as one Muslim community, if we get together and agree on one voice, they come and see us one united Muslim organization, then they would talk to us as one unity, right? So can I get a commitment here, within a month, that you guys are gonna meet and agree on the approach that you're gonna take with the White House and with Congress?
Too much, too much.
Let's keep the answers till later. We're ending up with the last answer. I put the questions here, so we'll add. The last question.
I think we're just going to make it clear, and we are for engaging with law enforcement. We are for engaging with law enforcement, because we have members in the community in law enforcement. If I have any questions, I can always go to Michael Abdi, I can always go to Ahmad Adham, I can always go to others if I have a concern and say, "How can we resolve this issue?"
Michael Abdi, could you stand up, so she's mentioning about you. Michael Abdi in your... LA Police, and your title is...
He's a sergeant with the LA Sheriff.
Sergeant LA Sheriff, thank you.
So, we're not for, we're not for disengaging, because this is our right as Americans citizens, is to be engaged. So this is a given. But, and I'm very proud to see all these panelists here speaking or engaging with this issue. We need them to engage and not attack each other. Attacking each other is not a good idea. We need you to engage with each other. And if there's one thing that you come up with, like the gentleman said, that we're all going to protect the Muslim community, we all have the best interest of the Muslim community at heart, that's what we need to do. And as my neighbor said, yes, we don't want to see the US have the same issue that we had in Afghanistan and in other Arab countries where you're afraid to say anything in your mosque or in your, any community event for the fear that somebody's gonna relay that to law enforcement.
Thank you, Rima. Sure, sure. Yeah, and do you want to know what they were specifically, or you would cut them off?
I'm sure everybody else, Salaam alaikum. Just, I have to leave because I have to be in Pasadena by 5 o'clock, which...
You cannot make us.
Maybe I can use one of the police cars that are here. Let me just start by saying, we did meet with CARE. And I have been speaking to Dr. Siddiqui about coming up with a resolution. I don't know if you were at the Chutba, but the Chutba was about, how can we come up with a framework to agree when there are differences of opinion? United in purpose with different approaches. I think there are disagreements here. I didn't, I don't want you to keep talking about, "Oh, there's always disagreement and fighting." No, no, we're all just trying to do what we think is best. And just, let's just tone down the rhetoric and say, we all have different approaches. That's number one. Number two, it is erroneous to think that Barack Obama has any equal standing with George Bush. Barack Obama is providing us an opportunity. Yes, there are problems in the past. In 16 months, there's going to be a new president. That new president is not going to be like Barack Obama. This is the opportunity we have here to engage on this issue, to institutionalize the partnership that we developed in Los Angeles. That's what they mean by pilot. There's nothing more to that. How many people have read the LA framework on CVE? We all need to read it and say, "This is what we're against, this is what we're for." If we haven't read it, then we really don't know what we're talking about. So we need to talk about things that we know what is there. You talk about stigmatization? ISIS, al-Qaeda, Boko Haram is the source of the stigmatization. Are there US foreign policy problems? Absolutely. Are there US domestic policy problems? Absolutely. But we can't complain about stigmatization when it is those groups that are dominating the arena. We have to push them out and put ourselves onto the platform. The final thing I want to say is, you want to go to Saudi Arabia? Fine. But what we're saying is the Shura should not, and I'm saying this directly to Dr. Siddiqui, should not oppose the Muslims that went to the summit that is our own government with our own tax dollars. We want our tax dollars to serve our community. Whether we're talking about mental health, or law enforcement, or social services, or engaging youth, we want more public funding that infuses the mosques with these resources so we can do a better job. That's what it comes down to, no matter what issue we're talking about. And it does require people to be at the table to negotiate that so we can direct it. So when we say countering violent extremism, what we mean by that is the counter-narrative to ISIS on that issue, and the counter-narrative to white extremism, and the counter-narrative to any kind of hate. Our role is to amplify Islam's voice so it is known as the antidote to any kind of extremism. It is a community-led initiative. And this program is what we can do for our community with this particular administration. I believe it's a sense of urgency, and I agree, and that's why IMPACT is urging all Muslim organizations to come with a cohesive, coherent strategy on this issue. Thank you, Salaam alaikum.
I just, I think I'm just gonna choose to only address the last issue, which I think is a very important issue, which is the issue of, you know, you're fighting with each other, don't fight with each other. After 9/11, Todd and I worked together extensively from our respective places. He is a lawyer, and I as the Washington DC head of IMPACT, on the shutting down of Muslim-American charities after 9/11 pursuant to the Patriot Act and the proposition that Muslims who give to, give assistance in places where there is terrorism are in material support of terrorist organizations. We are friends. I mean, you know, we fight, I mean, we fight. I mean, I and my brother fight all the time. I mean, me and Harun Azar is running this project. He and I just had a fight on text messages two days ago. I mean, you know, this idea that we're not one team is a fallacy. It's a complete fallacy. I do not oppose CARE. I have never opposed CARE. I 100 support, I 100% support CARE, and I support the Shura Council. And I am not an employee of IMPACT. But the passion is due, because we are in a unique moment. And if we don't spend some of our own social capital to stop this discourse that is all labels and exaggerations, and is not specific to the reality that we're attempting to assess, then the community will be led astray. The community will be led down the wrong path. And the wrong path is not the CARE path. It's not. The wrong path is the path that is taken when you are not listening very carefully to what is being said by the people that are challenging the programs that already exist. So I will yield all of my comments in lieu of one comment. We are not fighting. We love each other for the sake of Allah. All of our relationships are a subset of our relationship with Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. And the people in North Carolina, we all cried. Some of us suffered more than others because you are a family, but we all suffered. We are one body. And when one part of us hurts, we all hurt. And when one part of us succeeds, we all succeed. But we have a responsibility before Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, which maybe I'm taking a little too seriously. Sure. We all have a responsibility before Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, to speak clearly and with integrity, and to slice what needs to be sliced substantively. So, I love you.
So can we take that to a, some sort of a commitment that maybe you guys will commit?
Look, man, I mean, we went to CARE, and we sat down with Hassan Aydush and all of his senior team. Harun wasn't able to be there because he had a meeting that day, but his whole team were there. We sat down and we proposed the publication of a letter by all of us that would speak to Salam's Chutba today, the ethics of disagreement and the discourse of disagreement. That document is now being edited by the CARE team for the past number of days prior to it being published, right? They are engaged. They are interested in engaging, and we are interested in engaging. Salam called Siddiqui. We're going to the Shura Council. Ahmed Sheikh, raise your hand, has put together an event in front of all of the leaders of the Shura Council. Last week, we were in the mosque in Herneheim. I mean, I just want to say, this is not just talk. There is concrete action pursuant to the intent that we are all members of the same community, we are all one team. But I cannot agree with my brother every single day on every single topic, because that is not authentic.
If you're not at the table, you're on the menu, but you have to do it the right way.
So, you have the last word, so.
Yeah, I, yeah. So just to address some of the questions, you know, I have some questions out there about looking for solutions, and also some comments about engagement. Those two things are the same. The solution to this problem, the solution to being isolated, the solution to the narrative that Muslims are terrorists, is being engaged. And nobody up here is saying that Muslims should not be engaged. We are just saying, how should we be engaged? We are saying it is dangerous, dangerous for us to be engaged in a way that continues to support that domino narrative, that connects Muslims to terrorists. That is an LA law enforcement mentality. That is, just the nature of law enforcement is adversarial, is us versus them. Prosecutors, they get gold stars, not for being amazing community liaison, they get gold stars for putting people in jail. So we don't want to be stuck in that relationship. We want to have that engagement on those other more authentic, more real, real, real levels, that address the fundamental causes of this, that address the fundamental causes of extremism, which are mental health issues, which are poverty issues, which are a whole myriad of issues. We want to get into that. I think Ahmed here is a hundred percent right. You know, we, we, we try to talk to each other, and, you know, when we're dealing, if you think this is a fight, come sit in some of our meetings, you know, just internally. We're passionate people. We, we, none of us are up here because we're like, "This is the way, we're gonna make a million bucks." No, we're doing this because this is something we're passionate about, and it's something that's new. We're dealing as a community with issues that others haven't previously dealt with. Passionate, intelligent people, dealing with new issues, are gonna come to different, different conclusions, and they're gonna argue about them. Inshallah, we should do the better job of making that discourse, make, make it clear to everybody that the discourse is civil, at least internally. But, but definitely, we are on that same page, but I do think it's impossible and probably irresponsible for us to try to reach an agreement on every issue. We need to have a diversity of voices. Each community member needs to choose for themselves the best way for them to be engaged. Each community leader needs to choose, each margin board needs to choose the best way for their center to be engaged. We all need to be engaged in the way that we find best.
Thank you, Todd. Harun, you have the last word.
Save the best for last. So Salaam, Salaam left, and I wish I was here, but I just want to clarify something that Salaam said. So, the Shura Council did not put any statement out against anybody who attended the White House summit. If, if that was what was inferred, Brother, Brother Ali, check one here, he was part of delegation, looking very spid, being a suit, here and at the White House. But the Shura Council did not criticize people who went. The Shura Council has passed a resolution declaring that they do not want a CBE program within our Southern California community. With that said, my, you know, Emma talked about his responsibility before God. My responsibility before, you know, we have, I have one as well, we all do. And, and I believe, and the reason I do this work, is I do not want my community viewed through a national security lens, right? If, if a neighbor of yours, three houses down, every two weeks, there are three cop cars pulled up in front of that house, you're not gonna think of that house as the most secure house in your neighborhood. You're gonna think of that house as a house that inherently has problems, and the cops need to constantly be there to, to take care of any problems that arise or that may arise. So, so that is the public opinion disaster that's gonna result from this, how it's gonna further, further exacerbate the problem of Muslims being perceived as a threat and as an issue within our community, is, is only gonna get made worse by this program being implemented. Secondly, I, I do not want my son growing up in a community, growing up in a masjid where he believes, or he sees, or he's told that this masjid, this community, is, is a potential breeding ground for, for violent extremists, and therefore, the government needs to keep an eye on this masjid. I, I don't believe that is conducive to his religious education, and to his relationship to his, his community and his religion. Lastly, the, the broadest responsibility that we have is that this is a pilot program. If this program does get launched in our community, it is gonna get launched in other communities as well. So the responsibility we have is not only protecting our masajits in our community, but those community, but, but all of America essentially. And the people who are victimized by FBI's practices of sending in informants are, are not people like you and me. You and me will probably never come across a person who has been entrapped by the FBI. The people who get entrapped are people who, for the most part, have some kind of mental illness, for the most part, are disenfranchised, are new converts, are misled, have some social handicap, which the FBI preys on. So it's, it's not even about how it's gonna impact us here, it's about how this is gonna impact our brothers and sisters who are on the fringes of this community. And, and to me, that is, that is also a part of my religious duty, and, and the reason why, why I believe is, is it's important not to let, not to let this, this program be implemented in our city. Thank you.
I would like to, I will let you finish here, but I think this here today has been, I hope you find, is a good education, to understand what is this program about, and I think more importantly, to understand that we have passionate, highly educated, highly capable people at the helm of our organizations, who passionately care about these issues that impact you and your children, and your families, and your future, and they're really following through with such passion. I think they both understand, as I'm hearing, there is steps to be taken. I think CARE is being much more careful, and wants to protect and be totally protective. I find that the IMPACT position is, "Let's work while we can, let's shape this discussion while we can." And I think both are right and correct, and both are worthy of our support, and, and being rallying behind them all the time. So, I would like to end this on this, Maria, I'm respecting everybody's time, with her final word, to a lady nonetheless, to know that we do that OCIF. So if you would, don't mind.
Sure, and before I pass, for anybody who wants to follow the conversation, friend, Emma, she can go to Facebook, because this conversation will not end here, this will continue on Emma Sheikh's Facebook.
Thank you, thank you.
I just wanna, you know, because I, I felt a little bit confused, although I was in the White House. Everything Harun said, what he wants, is exactly what we talked in the White House. And the negative thing, the point that he said, "We don't want a surveillance, we don't want the mosque to be targeted, we don't want people to label us," is exactly what the White House said. So I am surprised that you thinking that CBE is opposing that. We, everything we said at the CBE, whatever Obama said, the Vice President, the three workshop that I attended, the Speaker, they said, "It is exactly what you want for your kids." Exactly what you want. I was there, I heard them, I attended the presentation, two days. None of them said, "We wanna know exactly your email, your text." They didn't talk about that. So, I wanna tell you that, what you wanna say, what you said just right now, is exactly if you go back and you listen to what we said during the program, during the workshop, is exactly that. Word by word, statement by statement. Nobody wants to target any masjid, nobody wants to have the surveillance and camera everywhere, you know, nobody's interested. And exactly what you said, the last statement, you said, "We are the majority. The minority, they already know who they are." And we're talking about the majority, the good people. You, you are the good people.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate you giving us your afternoon, and look forward to seeing you at future events in Orange County. Thank you.